Welcome, if I can have everyone's attention, I'm going to be doing some announcements before we begin the taping. You should know, before we begin the forum and our videotaping and live broadcast, that the League of Women Voters wants to be sure we are nonpartisan, nonbiased, and fair to all candidates. Therefore, no signs or buttons are allowed in this room, but you may have them outside in the lobby area. During the videotaping and live broadcast, please remain as quiet as possible so we can hear the candidates and hold your applause to the end. We model civil interactions at our League events, so, and I'm sure this won't be a problem, just to remind everybody, no yelling out, interrupting, or otherwise behaving inappropriately. But that includes, please silence your cellphones. I know some of you will be videotaping and that's not a distraction, but please turn off the ringer, and also, please do not use flash photography, because that is very interruptive when they're videotaping. And we're going to begin just shortly, so we want to invite the candidates to come up and sit in their assigned seats, and we'll begin in just a couple minutes. Thank you. We're waiting for one more candidate, which, he was just here a moment ago. Okay. Oh, thank you. And I'm sure the candidates probably already figured out how to turn on their microphone. There's a button and you get the red light to say that it's on. Okay. All right, we're ready for our technician to begin our videotaping of the event, which is live. All right, well, welcome to the Hayward Forums for City Council Candidates and then the mayoral candidates. This is conducted by the League of Women Voters Eden Area. Our League represents Hayward, Castro Valley, San Leandro, San Lorenzo, Fairview, Cherryland, and Ashland. My name is Penny Peck, and I'm currently the President of the Eden Area League of Women Voters. I also am the Vice President of the San Lorenzo School Board. Throughout our history, the League of Women Voters has been providing opportunities for candidates seeking public office to take their case directly to the voters. League Candidate Forums are an expected part of political campaigns for every level of public office. We have a longstanding reputation for fair, unbiased, and competent service to workers. The purpose of this forum is to provide voters with information that will help them make their informed choice when they cast their ballots. The League of Women Voters promotes political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens in our government. The League is nonpartisan. It's a nonpartisan political organization, which means although we often do advocate for positions on public issues, we do not ever support or oppose any political party or candidate. This forum is part of our voter education service to the public. Our candidate forums and interviews are controlled by the League and not by the candidates. Before we begin, there are a few things I'd like to share about how we will proceed. The candidates received all of this information ahead of time. First, this will be a one-hour forum, or 45 minutes. The candidates will have one minute to make an opening statement. This order has been determined by drawing numbers. During the opening statements, our assistants will walk around and pick up cards that you in the audience have filled out to ask a question. All the questions need to be in the form of a question and not statements. The questions will be delivered up here to my friend Renee, who will sort the questions to ensure that we cover as wide a variety of issues as possible within our time constraint. We'll try, but we may not get to every question submitted. In my personal experience, I've noticed that often we'll get the question more than once, and so, of course, we'd only ask it one time. So it might be worded a little differently than the way you submitted yours, because somebody else asked that question. All candidates receive the same question and have one minute to respond, and we rotate who goes first to answer. So you in the audience, be aware that your question needs to be aimed at all the candidates. You can't ask a question that is aimed at just one person. It has to be a question that's appropriate to ask all of our candidates. At the end of the question and answer portion, we will conclude with two-minute closing statements. So start with one-minute opening statement, two-minute closing statement. Our League timekeeper, who's right here in the front, Iowa Zalinski, she'll keep track of the time and signal candidates when their time is nearly up. I think she'll signal first with a 15-second and yellow light and a sign, and then she'll signal with a red light and a paddle that says "stop." So you'll see both the light display and the paddles, and it'll be helpful to candidates, please be aware of the time, so that I'm not forced to have to cut you off. In the interest of serving voters, we caution candidates to refrain from negative attacks on each other. For some reason, for the same reason, we expect the audience to give each speaker an opportunity to be heard. This is not a town hall where you can stand up and just shout out a question. You need to write those questions on the cards that our friend Linda, Ms. Foster, she's going to be there to collect them. Also, in deference to our limited time, we ask you to hold your applause to the end. Now that we're familiar with the format, I'd like to introduce our candidate in the order in which they'll begin their opening statements. We have Ms. Sarah Lamnan, Mr. Tom Ferrera, Mr. Marvin Pachote, Ms. Aisha Wahab, Mr. Joe Orlando Ramos, and...
Ramos.
Ramos, thank you. And Didicus Ramos? No, is that correct?
That's what it was.
Or Ramos.
Aisha.
Aisha, thank you. I have a friend named Aisha, you'd think I would know that. Aisha Wahab, thank you. And I really appreciate the candidates helping me with that. All right, so we're going to begin with our one-minute opening statements with candidate number one, Sarah Lamnan.
Good evening, everybody, and many, many thanks to the Eden Area League of Women Voters for this forum tonight. I'm proud to have been a member for almost 10 years, and I am just really excited to be here, because I love my job, and I'm not done yet, frankly. And I want to give you at least one example, we'll see how the time goes, whether or not I can do more than one in one minute. But I want to give you an example of what makes this job so exciting. So when I got elected four years ago, I often heard that there wasn't anything for youth to do in our community. And so I went to our youth commission, which is a body of high school, middle school, and college students, and I said, "What do you think is fun? What would make Hayward more youth-friendly?" Because I'm old, I don't know. And so, they decided to do a survey, and they got that information, and the answer was a bowling alley and in Southland Mall. It took us three years, but that will open this winter. Thank you.
Mr. Ferrera.
I'd like to thank everyone for showing up today, and also thank the League of Women Voters for being here and putting this on for us all. I'm not a politician, never been a politician, I don't have a sad story or anything, but I've been in Hayward for about 23 years now. I work on the ambulance, 911 ambulance, so when you call 911, I show up for about 22 years. I'm married, I have two kids, both in the public school system here in Hayward, and during that time, being on the ambulance, seeing a lot of driving around, I noticed a lot of things that I wanted to see change, so some friends told me, "Maybe you should run for city council and see about changing some things." So that's why I'm here, and that's why I'm here for Hayward and the future of Hayward. Thank you.
Mr. Pachote.
Thank you. My name is Marvin Pachote, and for the past eight years, I've had the honor and privilege of serving you as your Hayward City Council member. I am a Hayward native. I was born in Hayward Hospital, just one block north of this building right here. I'm the son of immigrant families that resided and took up roots in the Val Vista area of South Hayward. I received both of my degrees from Cal State Hayward, and I'm proud to have the name Hayward displayed on both of those diplomas. You've probably seen a lot of building going on in Hayward. One of them that I am most proud of is going to open this October 27th, and that is the Hayward 21st Century Library. But we've got a lot of other issues to deal with, including the budget and affordable housing.
My name's Aisha Wahab. I'm running for Hayward City Council. I've always been seen as an outsider, since I grew up in foster care, but with every family, every culture, and every language I lived with, I realized that everyone wanted the same thing, an opportunity to succeed. And my number-one priority is affordable housing for all people at all income levels. It's clear that Hayward is changing rapidly, specifically, rising housing costs, higher crime, a budget balanced by taking money from the reserves. These things are hurting people, and my fight is for them. I hope that tonight, that you can listen to what I have to say, keep an open mind, and potentially, I hope that I can earn your vote, and remember, I am last on the ballot. Thank you.
Mr. Ramos.
Where there is no vision, the people perish. That comes out of the Old Testament, and basically, that's talking about people with no vision, and that's City of Hayward. We need to have a vision. We need to be able to look forward to what's happening, and we need some new blood. So, what I, I agree with my friend here to the right, the key thing with Hayward is affordable housing, is housing, fair housing, especially for senior housing. Items that got me interested was, number one, the budget, number two, corruption. There's corruption in this city. It's on this city council, okay? And so, housing and taxes. So, I'd like to come in here, is that a signal to stop? 15 seconds, all right. So I ask you to think about the future. Sarah and my buddy Marvin, they're nice people, but they need to go. We need to get some new blood.
Thank you. Mr. Didicus Ramos.
Yes, this is not about just me, this is about you. This is about what's best for Hayward, this is about making it a better place. I believe in the economy, in the community, and in opportunity. Those are my catchwords, but all that is really a matter of access and inclusion, including everybody, regardless of your age, regardless of where you came from. My family's been here a long time, over 125 years. So yes, I've seen a lot of Hayward changes. We owned a huge farm, we subdivided that farm, but it was always a quarter-mile from downtown. Now, the outskirts of Hayward are deserts for food, deserts for access to the goods and services they need. That needs to change, and that needs to be part of our vision for a future of Hayward, a vision where we can all live to the best ability that we have.
Thank you. Thanks to all our candidates. So now, we're going to begin with Ms. Lamnan, I'm going to ask her the first question, then the second question, I'll ask Mr. Ferrera, and he'll respond first, and then you'll all answer the same questions, but we'll go down that line, so everybody gets a turn at beginning a question. My first question is regards to Measure T. It's on the November ballot, and it would increase the real property transfer tax from $4.50 to $8.50 per 1,000 to fund many city services, such as 911, firefighters, library hours, and repairing streets and sidewalks. Are you in favor or opposed to Measure T and why? Ms. Lamnan.
So I am supportive of Measure T. I voted to put it on the ballot and allow the voters to make a decision, and I think it's a really key strategy for our community. We've spent a lot of time working with our employee groups. I've personally been testifying in Sacramento. I sit on our Budgets and Finance Committee, and we've done a lot to control expenses, and there's more work to be done there, not done yet. But that said, we also need a little bit more revenue as those expense-saving measures come fully, come to be fully implemented. And so Measure T is a key component of that, of balancing that budget, and I'm looking forward to being able to do that for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferrera.
I'm against Measure T, and going door-to-door, speaking with everybody, a lot of people are also against Measure T. This council's had many proposals over the years. Since 2009, we had three tax increases. We had Measure A, Measure D, and Measure C. Some of those are like 20 years, so that's like a dime, sales tax taken away. It's like having a dollar and you only have like 75 cents when you come to Hayward. So I'm against Measure T. I think there's other things that we could do that would be better to curb our spending, but yes, I'm against Measure T.
Thank you. Mr. Pachote.
Thank you. I'm in favor of Measure T. I voted to put it on the ballot. Remember, we did not take a position as a council, other than to put it on the ballot, so this is really up to the citizens of Hayward. I believe we need to pass Measure T, because it's been so long since we've increased the regional property tax. The city of Oakland, Berkeley are at $15 per 1,000 assessed value. Emeryville's at $13 assessed value, San Leandro is at 6, and Hayward is at $450. It is not unreasonable to raise that to $850 per 1,000. And remember, this tax is assessed at the point of sale, so it's entirely negotiable between the seller and the buyer. I do support Measure T.
Thank you. Ms. Wahab.
Well, I don't support regressive tax measures. However, the city is hurting bad for money. As I mentioned earlier, our reserves are at 14% when they are required to be at 20%. The poor financial management of this current city council is, you know, pushing that forward. I do support Measure T, primarily because it's well-written, in the sense that it can be split between buyer and seller, or completely just the buyer, or completely just the seller. This tax, even though it's an increase, it will bring us up to par with relative cities in our Bay Area. So you do have to support it, because right now, we need it.
Mr. Ramos.
Okay. First of all, I oppose it as a stance, from $450 to $850. No, my main thing is, we have to live on our budget. I could see maybe raising up a little bit, maybe $5, $6, that'd be negotiable, but as it stands, I oppose it. And a little background about myself, I've been in Hayward since May of 1987. I was brought up here by the Marine Corps, and I've been here since that time, except when I left a couple of years to go to grad school. But I've accomplished a lot in Hayward. I worked for the school district, I received my associate degree at Shebault College, I received my BA at San Francisco State, and several other master degrees. I oppose this measure.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
I do support Measure T, and I support it because the city needs it. It's not an outrageous thing, it's a one-time assessment on the sale, and there are exceptions for it. So if you're donating your property, if you're giving your property to your children, and there's one other exception, this doesn't apply. So it's not something that's outrageous. Now, we are trying, and I've seen the council work very hard at curbing the expenses of the city. I believe that there's another elephant in the room, and that's called income, and that's something we have to discuss. But as far as this goes, right now, we have debts and obligations that we have to meet, and this is a modest, a modest measure, that doesn't even bring us up to where most of the cities in the Bay Area are, and that's an important factor. So I do support Measure T.
Thank you. We're now going to begin the questions with Mr. Ferrera, and I neglected to say, if any of you ever need me to repeat a question, don't hesitate to ask. This question, I bet every community is asking their candidates here in the Bay Area, "What are your plans to deal with affordable housing?" And then, this person made a comment I thought was very relevant. "As a lifelong resident of Hayward, my young adult children cannot afford to live and stay in Hayward. So what are your plans to deal with affordable housing?" Mr. Ferrera, you'll begin for us.
Thank you. Affordable housing, over the last couple decades, we've been building condos, we've been seeing townhomes all over the place, but there's not really anything for low-income housing for people. And with that low-income housing, with that new housing that comes in, like, to give you an example, the South Hayward project that they have by BART that they're building, it requires 6% of that to be low-income housing. And to give you an idea of what the requirement is, is less than 400-square-foot rectangle room, that's it. There's no bedrooms, there's no living room, there's no dining room. You don't even have your own parking space, you have to park out on mission, because you don't have your own space. So that is what the developers are telling the city, and the city is just going along with it. We need to do more, maybe raise that up to 6, maybe up to 25% of low-income housing for people, and help people out.
Thank you. Mr. Pachote.
Thank you. And I've got to say that this affordable housing issue is probably the most difficult issue I ever had to deal with on the council. And it's difficult, because, number one, it's a regional issue. So unless everybody else around us is doing the same thing that we're doing, we're not going to get anywhere. But we did, just this last Tuesday, approve 259 units for very low and extremely low people, who are seniors, veterans, and people with mental disabilities. We've got to continue along that path. We've got to continue to ensure that there is some form of inclusionary affordable housing onsite in all the projects that we approve coming forward. An example is Maple and Main, right at the corner of Maple and Main, where you have 48 affordable housing units.
Thank you. Ms. Wahab.
So affordable housing is my number-one issue. I do believe in housing for all people at all income levels. There's a couple of different ways to attack affordable housing. Primarily, one is rent control. Hayward went from 22,000 units being covered under rent control to today's 1,600 units. So that's very sad. I also want to increase the percentage for new development. Currently, it's at 7% to 10%. It should be a lot higher, even San Francisco moved it in this past year to 20%. Number three, I believe in permanent affordable housing for people on fixed incomes, including veterans, seniors, and those individuals. Number four, I believe in a down payment assistance program that will help a lot of families to at least put a home in their future. This particular council voted no on a program like that. The project that was approved by city council this past week was actually pushed by Alameda County and the voters of Alameda County, called the A1 Housing Bond Measure. Otherwise, if we, as voters, don't ask for housing, I will tell you that this city council will not do anything for affordable housing, because they haven't.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Amen. The deal with housing is just like Aisha said. I also agree with Marvin on that point. But most of the people in the city council, all they want to do is kiss butt and agree, and what they want to do is they get money. There's a certain person, I won't tell you her name, but she's a councilperson on the right. And so she's taken money from developers, so how's she going to make an equal vote? So let me go back to the first thing we asked, that we talked about. I'm opposed to that Measure T, because the problem is the city council members we have, they can't budget, they can't stay within their budget. So if you've got a checkbook and you only get $3,000, you cannot spend $3,010, and that's the problem, they can't manage the money. They just want more money, and so they're going to have to, they're going to have to, they're going to have to be able to work within their budget, and that's their tough luck. They're going to have to do a few things, and that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to work on the budget, because you can't spend what you don't have. That's the main point.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Okay. I'm an economic development specialist and an urban planner, so this is my bollywack. I actually built affordable houses, not just to talk about them. And I built them affordable to build, affordable to buy, affordable to live in, and those are three different factors that are not always included. As far as Hayward goes, it's not just housing. Building houses is not something that you just do to fill up holes around the city. You have to do it with access, which means that we need to cluster our houses in order to have people have walking-distance access to the goods and services they need. The city was built outside of the downtown area by developers, and we were at the mercy of those developers. They built housing tracks with no access to anything. There's a few strip malls here and there, and we've been trying to backtrack on that for 60 years. It's time that we actually build villages, we build towns, we build centers, plazas, where people can actually live. And then, the other elephant in the room is income. You can lower the cost, but you have to raise the income of our residents as well, and nobody's talking about that.
Thank you. I think we're going to now begin with Mr. Pachote. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lamnan didn't answer yet. Thank you for queuing me on that.
It's okay, just thought I'd check. Housing, absolutely, this is the number-one issue. And when I was on the Planning Commission prior to getting elected to council, what I realized is that by the time a project got to the Planning Commission or to city council, it was too late. It's too late to talk about accessibility, it was too late to talk about affordability. And so I met with those developers, because the city doesn't build the housing, and so it's the developers that do that, and to say, "What is it going to take to get you to build affordable units within the complexes? What's it going to take to build units that are accessible for everybody in our community?" And over time, what we've seen is now we have units built affordable by design, and not just by subsidy, that we have units that are accessible for all people, and that we have complete communities, where there's jobs, and housing, and recreation, all in the same complex. I've pushed for those efforts for eight years now, and obviously, we've got more work to do. The other piece of that, in the last 15 seconds, I'll tell you next time. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we're going to now begin with Mr. Pachote, and this question begins, "Economic development is the lifeblood of a healthy city. What will you do to make sure we have thriving business districts throughout all of Hayward?"
Well, I think we've actually done a pretty good job, at least in the last four years, of filling some of the vacancies in the downtown. But economic development is not just about the downtown, and so what we're doing is, we're revitalizing parts of South Hayward. One of them is the Tennyson Corridor, and we're hoping to attract new economic development in that area. My concern is that we need to fill some of the vacancies in the downtown. We've decided as a council that we want to have an entertainment venue along with retail in the downtown, and I think we can do a lot more in approving some of these restaurants and cabarets that have applied to fill some of these vacancies in the downtown.
Thank you. Ms. Wahab?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. "Economic development is the lifeblood of a healthy city. What will you do to make sure we have thriving business districts throughout all of Hayward?"
I think there's a couple of different things we need to do. One is to ensure that we tap into the potential of the city. With that being said, we have three colleges in the city, we need to develop a partnership with the colleges. So that means that we develop an incubator program to allow for our diversity to actually become entrepreneurs. We know statistically that entrepreneurs tend to be immigrants at a higher level than American-born. We know that our city's very diverse, we need to tap into that. We also need to kind of take a look at how we streamline some of the processes to start a business. A lot of people are afraid, just because there's so much paperwork with starting your business. We need to streamline those efforts within the city. We also need to think about different types of partnerships, so leasing some of our assets, for example, can benefit the city in improving the infrastructure, but then also allowing for businesses to actually utilize some of the infrastructure for their growth and their business.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos?
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure.
Mike is now, thank you.
Economic... "Economic development is the lifeblood of a healthy city. What will you do to make sure we have thriving business districts throughout all of Hayward?"
First of all, what we need is entrepreneur spirit. And just like my friend to the right, she's got some good ideas. As a matter of fact, I'm going to just say it right now, I don't think she should run for City Council. I think she should run for mayor. Because we got, we got, we got two people here that, you know, it's between a rock and a hard place. But one thing, as a graduate from the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee's Urban Studies Program with a focus on urban planning, there's a lot of things that we could do here. I'm using an example. In my old neighborhood in Chicago, there's a little village, they broke that place up, money's coming in left and right, and now the Koreans have come in, too. Just as she mentioned, there's a lot of things that we haven't tapped into. The universities, the community college, most of you probably don't even know that Chabot College has a program where you can get an associate degree with a focus on a BMW, get a job. There's a lot of things happening in this city, but no one's taking care of it because we got the wrong people on this City Council, and two of them are sitting on this bench right now.
I'm going to caution you to please not yell because we're recording this, and the microphone won't work if you're yelling. Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
All right. I worked for 10 years in economic development, and I spent the last four years on their Economic Development Committee with the mayor and a couple of other council members, and one of them's here, too. The way to track businesses is to make it easier for them to come into the town. That's true. And we have to still work on our business licensing process and our business permitting process. We also have to diversify where we have our businesses so it gives people access to them, and we don't cluster them far away. The idea is that you don't want people to have to get in a car to get everything that they need. You need to have those things close by. So those are opportunities right there. As far as the entrepreneurial programs that we have in Chabot and at Cal State and anywhere else in the city, I've checked those out, I've studied them. They graduate about 34 people a year. There's 160,000 people, residents of Hayward. I don't think that that's going to be a solution. I encourage it, and entrepreneurial spirit is essential, but it is not something that we're going to have unless we make it available so that most people can have a business. And that's something we can do.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Lamnan, thank you.
Thank you. So four years ago, Hayward was kind of known as a place that was not very friendly to businesses. And so one of the things that has happened is that we had a business concierge program that started in our community and has really attracted businesses. For example, one of the highest needs in our community that we hear over and over and over again is grocery stores. And we've got three opening. One, just, we cut the ribbon this morning, two more are coming. We have, we are the highest attractor for venture capital in the region, and we're talking about a region that includes Silicon Valley. So we've done a lot to improve our economic development, and we've got a great team on board, and we're rebuilding that team so that we can continue that work. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Ferreira.
It's all about density. We need more people, more people are here in Hayward. There's a lot of complaints in the South Hayward area about, they need a grocery store, they haven't had one for a long time now, since Lucky's left. But we need more density around the South Hayward BART, more access to BART. There's a lot of opportunity on Mission to build, and we would get the economic development that we want from businesses and everyone else that would come. So it's all about density and bringing more people to Hayward with the housing crunch that we have in the Bay Area.
Thank you. Mr. Pichot. Oh, we started with you. Thank you. So now we're going to begin, I think, with Ms. Wahab. This is a question.
I believe I already know what you're asking.
No, we're going to start with a new, I think we're going to start a new question, right?
Yes.
Thank you. So Ms. Wahab will start this new question. And it's about protecting the environment. Is Hayward doing a good job in prioritizing protecting the environment? And what would you do more or less of?
I actually think Hayward is doing a relatively good job protecting the environment. I think that there have been measures to ensure that we reduce our carbon footprint on new development. I do think that we have been pushing for more green development, if you will. I do think that we can always do more, specifically because Hayward, we are in a very interesting place. We live on a fault, we're in a flood zone, and we're very close to the shoreline. We need to make sure that we actually invest in protecting our shoreline and lifting the sea or the floor about one foot to protect ourselves for the next 100 years. These are scientifically proven things. With developers, we need to work with them to ensure that they make the investment to do this, so it eases our burden, if you will. I do think that we can do a lot more in regards to making things pedestrian-friendly. Half of Hayward is completely flat. We need to make sure that we invest in our public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Okay. I'll touch on, right now, the transportation part. There's a lot of things that we could do that related to our water, and I'm not going to get into it right now, but transportation is something that could be done. At the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, the city, the county in Milwaukee, just like San Francisco, and they have a bus pass system that all the students in the whole county can use. There's a lot of things that we can do here that haven't been done only because the leadership is not there. It's a lack of leadership in the City Council, I'm going to tell you right now. And also, there's certain people that have been feeding their pockets because they think that Hayward is the magic piggy bank. So we need to have new vision, we need to look at transportation, housing, get rid of the corruption, and we need to move on with some new people.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Thank you. We touched on a bunch of subjects here. And as far as transportation goes, it's not just transportation. Transportation means vehicles. It's mobility, getting you from where you are to where you need to go. And there's a lot of different ways to do that. Now, this will help with the environment because if it can get you out of cars and get you where you want to go, that is the success that we're looking for. As far as other things go, we need to decentralize. Right now, all of our wastewater goes all the way down to the bay where it's processed, and we're trucking it back as recycling. We need to pipe it back to where we need to, so we can reuse it. If we just used recycled water instead of potable water, instead of drinking water on our toilets, we could reduce our water demand by as much as 25%. That's a huge, huge difference in the environment. How do we do that? We process it closer to where we need it to be distributed to. So we actually have other points that we actually process our wastewater and then reuse it close by. Close by is the key to most environmental health. And doing that is what we want to do with villages, with town centers, with plazas around the city.
Thank you so much. Ms. Lamnan.
Thank you. In the last couple of years, we have approved our, a new 2-megawatt solar array, which adds to our 1-megawatt solar array already in existence. We passed a zero-net energy ordinance so that all municipal buildings eventually will be zero-net energy. Our new library already will be, and we've already passed other measures that are moving us along that path. We were proud to join East Bay Clean Energy and push for a higher level of renewable energy mix as the default product, which also lowers the carbon footprint for everybody. And I've been a strong advocate for our recycled water project, which is being constructed right now, and so that we can make sure that our water doesn't just go back into the bay, but actually rebuilds our water table. And then I think where do we go next is really working with AC Transit and our other providers about public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferreira.
Yeah, same with me. When I'm talking to voters going house to house, they're talking about the long commute times, going over the bridges, San Mateo or if it's Bay Bridge, they would like to see more of the long-term, the buses that go, the transbay buses going over, they would like to see more of those buses to also reduce the carbon footprint, take 50, 60 cars off our roads every day, less traffic for us, too. Also, I think would be good is, since it's mostly a flat city, Oakland has a bike program. It's a Ford bike program, rental program. You could take bikes across, back and forth across the city, and you just park them there. Or they also have scooter program, too, which is very, it's been very useful. I've seen a lot of people use them. So that would be a good start for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pichot.
Thank you. Well, I would say we've already started, and I'd like to put Hayward's record of reducing greenhouse gases above any other one in Alameda County. Number one, all you have to do is look at this new library we created. That is going to be Leeds Platinum certified. We're going to have a cistern created across the street that's going to collect rainwater, shoot it under C Street, and use it to, for non-potable uses, to flush the toilets and for irrigation. Also, with respect to the 1.5-megawatt photovoltaic panels we have down at the end of Enterprise Avenue, you have to understand, 20% of this city's energy comes from that Water Pollution Control Facility District. They produce all the energy needed to run those pumps and send energy back to the grid. So of course, we're doing all we can.
Thank you. I think we're going to begin with Mr. Ramos, Joe Orlando Ramos. I think it's your turn to begin. This is regarding Proposition 10 and rent control. If Proposition 10 passes, what is one policy related to rent control that you would want to see the City Council pursue?
Can you repeat it, please?
Sure. If Prop 10 passes, what is one policy related to rent control that you would want to see the City Council pursue?
Okay, for one, the way it's written, I believe that the current landowners or the homeowners, they're, it's not going to be fair to them. So right now, I don't suppose, I don't support Proposition 10. I think it needs to be rewritten. I think that the, we need to do something about affordable housing, and I don't think that that's the, that's the answer. I think we need to get more people involved. I think we need to do different functions. One of them, back to the budget, I think we need to manage our pocketbook before we start looking about other things. But yes, we do need to do something about rent control, and I just don't think that's the answer.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Wow. I do support Prop 10. I was in Santa Monica when the first rent control occurred in the state of California. It started in Berkeley and Santa Monica. And the big excuse was they said that developers would stop building houses if we had rent control. Santa Monica has never slowed down in building housing, and it's built more affordable housing than anyone else in the state. So I know that even with Prop 10, that it won't stop developers, even with their threats, it won't stop them from construction. Affordable housing is a critical factor, and the word affordable is the critical factor in all housing. And there's two ways of looking at this. Yes, we can lower the amount at the house costs or residence costs, but we also have to raise the ability of people to afford, people to actually pay that amount of money, and we have to address that issue. The council has not addressed that issue, no council has addressed that issue anywhere. So we need to be the first to do that. Hayward is not doing everything we, please, Hayward is not doing everything we can on many of these subjects, but we have been the leaders in many of those subjects. We need to actually amplify that and become the envy of all the state.
Thank you. Ms. Lamnan, your take on Prop 10, and if it passes, how would you deal with rent control?
If it passes, well, even if it doesn't pass, the answer to rent control, as I see it, is really, it's got to be collaborative. You've got to involve the people most affected by the solution, I mean, by the issue. And so that looks like bringing the tenants to the table, the property owners, other stakeholders, and creating a solution. The idea that I'm considering at this point is something like a code of ethics. Both the rental housing owners and the real estate profession have these codes of ethics that look very similar to what reasonable rent increases look like. And so, starting from that, building on that, and then putting some teeth behind it about what really happens if people don't follow that code of ethics, I think is a really good place to start.
Thank you. Mr. Ferreira.
So if that passes, my concern is for the Hayward City Council, how, it says annual increases, how much of the annual increases would there be? Would there be a limit or a small amount? It also worries me that some of the taxes could be applied onto, onto that measure as well if it passes. So that is my concern, and I hope that the Hayward City Council could follow the rules and not tax our Hayward residents so much if it goes through.
Thank you. Mr. Pichot.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, this affordable housing issue is the most difficult issue I've ever had to deal with as a City Council member. It was heart-wrenching to see some of the tenants from Alo apartments come forward and right before that public rostrum say, "I can't afford to live in Hayward anymore. They've raised my rent 100% to 200%," just like that. And that is wrong. That said, I oppose voting for Proposition 10, which is the repeal of Costa-Hawkins, because I think it works a cross-purpose to the whole concept of creating more affordable housing. If it is repealed, there will be no landlords that want to build in the city of Hayward. There'll be no more development that will be done in the city of Hayward. Maintenance on these properties will be deferred, and it will be unsafe for the tenants that live there to continue living there.
Thank you. Ms. Wahab.
I disagree with both incumbents. If Prop 10 were to be repealed, which I hope it will be, the one policy that I would like for the city to pursue is to expand rent control. As I mentioned, rent control is a safety net. We know that with 22,000 people covered, or 22,000 units, we would be a better city with more affordable housing at people for all income levels. Today, we have 1,600 units under rent control. Hayward is one of 15 cities that has a rent control ordinance, but it's non-existent because they have allowed for landlords to de-control every single unit every single year. Now, when people talk about rent control, they say that we have a free economy, you know, things like that. Hayward is not a free competitive market. One man, one family in Hayward alone owns 85 buildings. So I do want to state that even with rent control, landlords can still increase their rent by 5%, which is higher than the Consumer Price Index. Therefore, rent control is just one way to tackle affordable housing.
Thank you. We'll begin now at the end with Mr. Ramos. How would you balance the city budget? New revenues? Spending cuts? Please be specific.
That's a difficult thing to be specific about. This is something that is negotiated and debated for very hot debates. And this last budget, there was actually, the only thing that increased was the benefits for some of the employees in the city. The way to balance a budget is to actually terminate some of the expenses that you have. And the way to do that is to actually change the design of the city. This is not something that's done immediately. This is something that's done over time. This is something that's part of a vision. Now, with the decentralizing the city, that's exactly what you do. You start to use cities, use streets for walking areas instead of trucking areas. You use, you have places that people can get to easily so that they can actually not have to spend a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of resources getting the goods and services that they need. That's the way you improve the economy of a city, and the economy of a city, the strength of the economy is on how many people can effectively participate in that economy.
Thank you. Ms. Lamnan.
Yeah, so over the past four years, we've decreased our structural budget deficit by 33%. And we've got a plan in place to close it completely in the next five years. I've been, I was the only elected official to start testifying at CalPERS meetings because the largest cost driver in our city is our pension costs and our healthcare costs. And so I started making sure that the city's voice was in that room because we hadn't been really engaged in that conversation for a long time. And when I started, I was the only elected in there, and about a year later, there were 50 of us, and there's more growing. So continuing to engage on the things that are regional or statewide, like some of the decisions made about pension and healthcare, and then continuing to work locally to control our expenses and balance our revenue. Thank you.
Mr. Ferreira.
Budget is a big thing for Hayward. In the next two years, by 2020, we're going to have a $5 million deficit if nothing changes. And a lot of that is probably, needs to be done is pension reform. The pension cost is so much, we're not able to cover our pensions. We haven't made ARC payment yet. It's already coming up. It's It's already coming up, it's October, we haven't made ARC payment yet for this year. So pensions is a big thing. If we could control that, maybe make it a certain year that after a certain time, maybe we could extend the retirement age to help with the costs of that. That would be very helpful for us and help with our budget. And also, look at all different aspects of Hayward, everything. I come from EMS, so I would think maybe even Hayward Fire Department would be good to do transport of their medical patients with their own ambulance.
Thank you.
And we'd get revenue that way.
Thank you. Mr. Pichot.
Thank you. I was a program financial specialist when I worked for Alameda County. And I can tell you, there are no magic solutions to solving the budget crisis that we have, particularly the structural budget deficit. There are two main drivers for the structural deficit: pensions and retiree medical coverage. We've done as much as we can, we need to move forward more, but thanks to our employees, they have agreed to contribute in a cost-sharing way to their side, to the employer's side of their pensions. However, the thing that concerns me even more than that is retiree medical coverage. Our unfunded liability for retiree medical coverage is $104 million. We are 96% unfunded. We haven't met our ARC. We need to address this. This is very serious.
Thank you. Ms. Wahab.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Basically, it's the city budget. What would you do to balance the city budget? What would you cut? What would you increase/decrease?
So unlike the incumbents, I don't blame employees for their retirement plans and their pensions. I don't think that's fair. I'm going to make it very clear that even in this fiscal year '19, the city is taking $6 million roughly from the reserves. So we are not necessarily on a good pace, if you will. One, we need to improve our credit rating. Currently, we have a negative credit rating. Number two, we need to embrace big thinking. We are in the heart of the bay, and we're not being, you know, entrepreneurs in that sense. We need to be improving our service and modernizing our infrastructure through leasing. Now, this is for revenue generating assets like water and parking systems. Through this, we can earmark several, or at least a good percentage of the funds that we receive to pay down our unfunded liabilities. There are several different ways we need to do this, but we also need to increase or generate more revenue. So I think that there's definitely different tactics that we need to tackle, but we have not done so because we do not have big thinkers on this council.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
I'm just thinking what Mr. Ferreira said about the fire department, and I'm wondering, for those who don't know, about how he allowed the fire chief, who was caught drunk, still keep his job. And we don't talk about this. That's part of the problem. The problem is that the developers, the people with the money, they influence the city council. Most of the city council, they want to be liked, so they go along with that, and also they don't know what the heck they're doing. And so most of, I'm trained as an urban studies specialist, as an urban planner, as an urban sociologist, and most of these people, you can hear it right now in the room, they're just going to say stuff to make you happy, but they have no idea and they have no plan to do what's fair because they're in somebody's pocket. And that's really what it comes down to. The corruption, one point on the budget is that they say 79% of the budget is on, is on the, how do you say, the employees', their money. Nothing's talking about the maintenance deferred and all these other products.
Thank you. All right. We're at the conclusion of our forum, so in a moment, we're going to begin our two-minute closing statements. We're going to begin at the end with Mr. Ramos and move this way, so you will be last. So that'll be two-minute closing statements, and then I have some very short concluding remarks. So we'll begin with Mr. Ramos. Thank you.
All right. You've been calling me Mr. Ramos for the whole night, and some people, I don't really mind what people call me because of Portuguese. And you couldn't pronounce it if I pronounced it in Portuguese, so Ramos, Ramos, it's okay. Ramj is how you say it in Portuguese, and nobody will understand that part.
I had a grandpa Ramos, and that's why I called you that. I'm very sorry.
All right. So, look, the, if the main problem we're facing is healthcare, if we had single payer healthcare, most of that issue would disappear. How about that? We can do that, but that means a lot of pressure on the state. I know that that's not going to happen instantly. I know that there's severe opposition to it, especially from the hospitals and the insurance companies, but it's something that can happen, it's something that should happen, and with something that we must make happen. Now, all these things, yes, they're big ideas and big thoughts, but we must think incrementally, too, and we must move ourselves forward. I don't think that the city has a big enough vision, the city leaders have a big enough vision for Hayward in the 21st century. That's why I'm running for office. I think that it can be a much better and a much bigger vision, but it also means changing our 1950s setup for the city of Hayward into something that actually can survive and can function in the future years. That environmentally, we haven't done anywhere near enough. Oftentimes, what we talk about with the environment, it's whether we can afford it. And if we can't afford it, we say, "Well, you know, that's all right. We'll just keep on going the way things are right now." That's not good enough. We have to start with, how is this going to affect the environment? Is it something that we can live with? Because that water is coming from the bay, whether we want it to or not. Raising the city a foot would not solve the flooding issues that we're going to be facing. All these issues require a different way of thinking, and I think that's what you're seeing here in both all my colleagues' ideas and expressions of opinions, but I think that what I'm offering you is an experience that will actually get us through, and not just for a year, but for many, many centuries to come.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Embrace big thinking, big enough vision. That's what he said. If you listen to what I said at the beginning, I said, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." And that's what the problem is.
No yelling.
There's no vision here. We need to get new vision, we need to get new people. As a graduate of the University of Wisconsin Urban Studies Program, where I'm a trained urban historian, urban sociologist, and urban planner, I worked for three cities. Chicago's Mayor Office of Manpower, Milwaukee's Economic Development and Historical Department, and San Francisco's Juvenile Promotion Department, working on the Gang Free Project. There is nobody here that has my experience. Maybe Didicus to my left, but then again, he might have some experience, but does he have vision? Does he have entrepreneur spirit? Can he go out there and get things done? A lot of people are good managers, but they have no vision, they're not leaders. As a former Marine, with 18 years in the Corps, we don't talk about management, we talk about leaders. And I am a leader. And you have someone to next me, who, and right here, between us, there's leadership. So you've got to find out who you're going to vote for, and though I like Marvin and Sarah, we need to move on with some fresh blood, with vision that can get the job done. Because if you want someone who's going to do the same old, same old, then vote for Sarah and vote for Marvin. And if you want someone who's going to take somebody's money, vote for the one at the end of the line.
Well, no attacking other candidates. Thank you. Ms. Wahab.
So my name's Ayesha Wahab. I'm running for Hayward City Council, and I ask for your vote. I'm listed last on the ballot. I'm an organizer, a nonprofit director, and a working-class American who earned an MBA here in Hayward. I've served as the Chair of the Human Relations Commission on the Keep Hayward Clean and Green Task Force, and have been involved in the city for many years, including being a member of the Leadership Hayward. I'll make it very, very clear. I will champion housing at all income levels, from seniors to students. There is no reason why our students need to sleep in their cars and seniors are being pushed out of their homes. After being named as one of Cal State East Bay's 40 Under 40 and San Francisco Business Times Most Influential Woman in Bay Area Business, I will ensure that Hayward is able to attract stronger business anchors, to grow its revenue base, create stronger jobs, and overall, improve our community and quality of life for all people. I know what it means to rely on the community. I want you all to know that I have not taken corporate money, I have not taken landlord money, and I have not taken developer money. We are specifically running this campaign for the community, and I want you all to be able to contact me at 510-863-1545. You can call me anytime. That is the type of leadership that Hayward deserves. Hayward deserves a leader that will definitely advocate for the common man in Hayward. And I want to make sure that all of Hayward is the focus of this city council. So I again ask you for your vote. I will bring a burst of energy to this city council and a brighter vision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pichot.
Thank you. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for participating in this democratic process tonight. You've heard from all of the candidates. You certainly have some divergent views. You've heard what they plan to do, you've seen what I've done. My goal is to build upon the progress we've made in the last four years and keep the momentum going. We're going to continue to deal with this issue of affordable housing, and I, it is a very serious issue. As I mentioned before, it's the most complex issue I've ever had to deal with because it is a regional issue. And so if other people around us aren't doing the same thing we're doing in the same proportion that we're doing it, we're not going to make a dent in the, in solving the issue. It was created out of an economic issue that we had no control over, the prosperity of the Silicon Valley. And I'm concerned that people will try to deal with this issue very superficially, at the lowest level. And I've taken a couple economic courses in college, and I know that when you take that simple approach, it has unintended economic consequences elsewhere. So we're going to deal with this as best we can. We're going to have inclusionary, affordable housing required onsite. We've taken the in-lug fees that we have collected over the years, and we're going to put that into affordable housing. I'm asking for your help. I'm asking for your vote. We've got to deal with some tough issues, including the structural deficit. We've got to get our reserves back over to the 20% threshold that we promised the people we would keep it at. So I want your vote this November 6th. I appreciate it. Let me continue to do what I've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferreira.
Thank you all for showing up today and being part of this process. I really would appreciate your vote. I have a lot of goals for the city that I want to complete. Just to share a little story from my past, my, when I was 12, I always, I wanted something else. I think it was like a radio or something like that, and my dad was saying, you know, "I provide you with three things. I provide you with a roof over your head, clothing, and food. If you want something else, you have to go out and get it and earn it." So ever since then, I've been working two jobs since age 12, newspaper, McDonald's, but all through life, and currently, I'm working three jobs, but, but I'm always goal-oriented and always finish my goals, and that's, that's the way I've always been. So I don't stop until it's done. So I really appreciate your guys' vote for the future of Hayward. And you can look me up, workingforthepeople.org. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Lamnan.
Good evening, for the final time this evening. Thank you all for coming out, thank you for listening, and for your attention to this important election. I started with a story about what I enjoy about this work, and I want to give you another one. When I started this job four years ago, there was a lot of contention between the city and its labor groups, and a lot of discussion about what our budget model looked like and what our numbers were. And I pushed for, and we now have, a whole new budget model that increases transparency. We've shared it with labor, and our conversations are productive. We have almost all of our contracts settled with the, with our employees, and we have phenomenal employees. The level of service that people in this community receive, the amount of commitment that our employees have for this city and for each of our residents is outstanding. And I am fortunate to be part of this great organization. I'm proud to serve you as a member of the Budget and Finance Committee, as your regional representative to the Stop Waste Board, and I've also served on the Technology Committee. And over my four years, I've been mentor to 12 different interns from throughout Hayward. I am pleased to have the endorsement of Congressman Swalwell, the, sorry, it's not the Daily Review anymore, it's the East Bay Times, local elected officials, some of my colleagues on council, and many community leaders and small business owners throughout our community. I encourage you to find out more about me at saralamnan.com. That's S-A-R-A-L-A-M-N-I-N dot com. And happy to continue meeting with you at our open office hours each week on Mondays and throughout community events, et cetera. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. You've been watching a candidate forum produced by the League of Women Voters. On behalf of the League and our audience, thank you to the candidates for joining us and for your willingness to run for this important public position. Thank you also for our volunteer crew and to Hayward City Hall for their role in bringing this information to the public. We will be replaying this recording of the forum on Friday at 4:00 PM and probably other dates, and that'll be on your Hayward Public Access Channel 15. For further information on all the candidates and ballot measures, and to see a copy of the ballot for your precinct, we invite you to visit the free website offered by the League of Women Voters of California, smartvoter.org. Also, we welcome new members to our League, both men and women. So please check out our information table for a membership brochure and other informative handouts on the upcoming election, which is Tuesday, November 6th. Our table is outside in the lobby. And we want to invite everyone to join us. After a very short break, we're going to have another forum between the mayoral candidates. And on Thursday, October 18th, right here at 5:30, we will have the Hayward School Board candidates. And we look forward to that as well. A motto of our League is "An informed citizenry is essential to making democracy work." So thank you to all our candidates and all of you. Thank you.